Okay.
Yes, you did. I can tell you're late.
Are you ready? Well, we got to re-write and re-write.
But you can discuss it, but I'll take care of it. It doesn't have to be... No, you can discuss it.
Me?
I don't know. Hello, Mr. Mike Smith.
How are you? We're just getting ready to start as soon as we get the recording on.
It's you, but...
What are you doing?
I just hit the record button, and this is what I'm asking. What did you do to this thing?
Somebody rewound the tape?
I have no idea. I've never seen this setting on this tape before.
It's okay.
Is the... I was gonna say, is the tape full?
No, it has one recorder from today.
She maybe was recording me while I was asked if everything was ready.
Well, she might be, but I can't get it to... No, it says it was at 5:30 in the scene.
It wasn't exciting. I can tell you that.
But I can't get it to, um, give me a blanket.
Can you play it through? It's 40 minutes. Oh, it couldn't have been if it was 5:30. Speed it up.
How'd it go?
Well, Mr. Ted. Unless I touched it. We'll log, so it'll be recorded through the log.
Okay. All right. If I could have your attention, please. I will call this meeting of the Lewis County Board of Education to order. It's Monday, January the 9th, 2023, and the time is 6:02 PM. At this time, I would ask Mrs. Mace to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Lewis, are there any agenda adjustments? Kenny is on the phone, correct, Kenny?
Yes, ma'am.
No, we just have under updates. I have, you know, more things to add.
Okay. All right. Then our first item is to conduct student expulsion hearing or agreement for student 2223F. I believe that we will have to go into executive session for that. Could I have a motion to go into executive session under West Virginia Code 69A4 to discuss the agreement with student 2223F?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make a motion.
Kenny is moved. Adam has seconded. Is there any discussion?
Ken, why, well, there, go ahead and talk about the other student, but it would be two different motions when you come out of the...
Okay.
Okay, so we will also be discussing 2223G. Is that agreeable, Kenny?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, Adam?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any discussion?
When you come out, we have to be clear. It's two different motions and actions.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 I didn't hear you, Kenny.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries 5-0. The time is 6:04 PM. Also going into executive session with us is...
John Winston, Dustin Coger, Mrs. Nazarad.
Okay.
And Lisa. We're going to go into Mr. Bill Tucker's old office.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to come out of executive session, please?
Make a motion.
May I?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. The time is six fifteen P. M. Let the record show that no action was taken in executive session. On the superintendent's recommendation, do I have a motion to approve the thirty day suspension of student twenty-two, twenty-three F?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Do I have a motion to uphold the superintendent's recommendation to expel student twenty-two, twenty-three G for thirty days?
Make a motion.
Mike has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Our next item of business, do we have any personnel achievement recognition or student achievement tonight?
When we get to the update, Mr. Ted will tell us some things our students are doing. Erin did report at our meeting Monday morning that he's working with the people in the community over some homeless issues, and he'll report that. They haven't had their first meeting yet. It'll be in Billington.
Okay. Academics would be the same later on, all right? There were no delegations that signed up?
They fellas?
Uh-huh.
Was that just academics or?
It was, well, there was personnel achievement recognition, student achievement, community involvement showcase. Dr. Lewis said that someone would be, in the updates, we would be covering some of that information as well as academics. And then there were no delegations.
I would just like to mention one thing. Congratulations to Triton Bush, a high school senior. He went eight and O this weekend, knocking off the number two ranked kid in the state and the number five ranked kid in the state, and he was also awarded the Army National Guard Leadership Award.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December twelfth and December nineteenth board meetings?
I'll make the motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. The consent agenda, we have an out-of-state field trip for the Lewis County Band and Choir, Alan Heath and Martina Norman, to Cleveland, Ohio, May nineteenth through the twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. That information is in our packet of pages twelve through fourteen. In addition, we have out-of-state meeting requests for Jill Balzer, Sherri Carr, Dustin Coger, I'm sorry, Joanna Coger, Brian Fisher, Diana Garrett, Christina Liebarger, Cynthia Nessarode, Doty Slaughter, Michael Smith, John Winston, Leslie White, for the High Schools at Work Conference in Orlando, Florida, July seventeenth through the twenty-first of twenty twenty-three, and those items are on pages fifteen through twenty-six in our packet. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Adam has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Dave has seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, one thing. Is everybody gone that wants to go, and is there money for them to go if anybody else wants to go?
For which one? I assume the band.
No, I'm talking about the one with the high schools are getting a reward.
The high schools at work, what historically has gone on is, as they've put in their requests, they've extended it out over two or three months as people figure out their own schedules. Then we've been approving them as we've received the requests.
Okay.
So you could see if anybody else would like to go.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, something that good, I think, you know, everybody ought to get to go.
Yeah.
This is the team that, go ahead, Mr. Coger.
This is the leadership team that went to Texas last year, and being the second year, we've expanded that team, and then we'll continue as we, as we go on to replace numbers so that eventually, hopefully, everybody that wants to attend out of state in our school will be able to.
That's what I was getting at. I just wanted to make sure.
The new place is kind of sticking together because of the work put in for right now.
Right.
And you guys will be presenting, and I assume you're going to have Mr. Smith a role. I know Leslie has a role.
Now, the funding for your trip is paid for through?
They receive a small S R E B grant, which only pays a little bit, and then we'll try to, go ahead, Mr. Carter.
We also want a free registration.
Oh, okay.
Last year, our team that went won a couple of events and won a free registration, so.
The escape route.
Yeah. So we've represented really well, and in, you know, a little over a year that we've been involved with S R E B.
And we'll use S A money.
S A money, okay.
Or stat.
And the band trip will be paid, funded through?
The financials.
Mambooshers?
And they've worked.
And?
And they've worked hard, Mr. Heath, correct, raising this money.
They always do.
They do.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have the finance report, approve the payroll and payment of bills in the amount of one million seventy-four thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make that a motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. Mrs. Mace?
She's at peace, and she'll be back.
Okay.
I can do it until then.
All right, if you would, Dr. Lewis?
We're going to personnel.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Ted, issue? Yeah. Okay. Under personnel agenda superintendent recommendations, these are the people resigning and retired. A, Chris Daniels. B, Matt Galispy. C, Rebecca King. And D, Randall Roy. And again, I'd like to post, if they retire by March first, they can receive a five hundred.
All right, Heath, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Adam has moved. Mike, is that a second?
Second, yeah.
All right. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries five zero.
Under two. Is A, Charles Queen rescind the hire mechanic at Lewis County Schools, back to November twenty-eighth?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero.
Sorry about that. I was actually on the phone with one of the neighbors' house from the family. They got something they wanted to tell me about. Okay. Number three, L, Cheryl Raving, special education teacher, Lewis County High School, effective January tenth, twenty twenty-three. N, William Bolinger, transitioned in-school suspension teacher, Lewis County High School, pending certified replacement. O, Matthew Galispy, substitute teacher, Lewis County Schools, effective for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And Q, Randall Roy, retroactive to January three, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that a motion.
Dave has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. I would like to take B and D separate from the others.
Okay. You can carry which one you're first. Please employ the following service personnel. B, April Montgomery, day-to-day substitute aide, Lewis County Schools, effective January tenth, twenty twenty-three. And D, April Montgomery, day-to-day substitute custodial maintenance, Lewis County Schools, effective January tenth, twenty twenty-three.
I would request an executive session to discuss personnel matter four, B and D. Do I have a motion to go into executive session under West Virginia Code six nine A four to discuss four B and D?
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. I've got Mike making the motion. Kenny seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries five zero. The time is now six twenty-six P. M. If Mrs. Mace and Dr. Lewis would join us in executive session, please.
If there's a.
I'm here.
Okay.
I make a motion we come out of executive session.
All right, Dave has moved to come out of executive section. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Posed nay. Motion carries five zero. The time is six thirty four P M. Let the record show that no action was taken in the executive session. I think we can just move on. Right, because we did not have a motion, did we?
I can roll call vote please.
Well, we have to have a motion then Mike.
Okay. I make a motion.
All right.
To not approve the hire of B and D.
You don't.
Don't do that.
You don't.
Needs to be a positive motion.
We just make a motion to.
On the super recommendation.
Okay.
And if you don't make motions or table it's done. Dead.
Okay, so there's. Now I'm tracking.
Okay. We'll move on to four F.
Are we taking an action on B and D?
I do not see that there was a motion made, was there?
Right.
I just need to make sure I got it right for the part for it, okay? Excuse me. F Dakota Jaeger custodial maintenance Louis County High School effective January eleven twenty twenty three. And G Pamela Tucker. Itinerant special education aid Peterson Elementary School effective January eleven twenty twenty three.
I have a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Mike has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed nay. Motion carries five zero.
Five, please employ the following professional extracurricular vacancies. B Janet McIntyre as instructional interventionist at Jane Lou Elementary School effective for the twenty two twenty three school year. Pending background check. Sandra Gifford, Robert Land Middle School effective for the twenty two twenty three school year. F Sandra Jane Title one. Title one school wide parent coordinator, Roanoke Elementary School for the twenty three twenty twenty two twenty three school year. I Sierra Davis before after school tutor for Louis County High School effective for the twenty two twenty three school year. And J Brianna Wilson, beginning teacher mentor of special education. Jane Lou Elementary School effective for the twenty two twenty three school year.
I'll make a motion.
Dave's moved to approve, is there a second?
I have a second.
Kenny has seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Motion carries five zero. I.
I can't hear what he said.
He wanted you to scoot up a little bit.
Mary Kenny, this is as close as I can get. Can you hear me?
Wait.
Sorry about that.
All right, moving on with our facilities and construction. Do we have the timber update first?
Yeah, so if you look in your folder.
Well, I don't mean to interrupt, but on six there, I know there's nothing in there but the boys' baseball. Uh, what's the status on it?
You got nothing back from the middle school, yeah?
Okay. Because I know, I mean, we're in January, so I mean, we're keeping up on it, so.
Okay.
In your folder number one is an update from Mr. Koo. And I, I went out and. It looks. Oh, good and okay, I, you know, from the school. I will tell you that um. The local school improvement met and they, you know, talked about priorities, not that they have a. That comes with a void and they want to replace the windows. So, we're all on the same page.
Okay.
The skylight and Missy can do that under facility update. She talked to um. That. S V A. So we'll talk, let her talk about that. And we're on now. Are you ready, Mrs. Mace?
What's that gonna cost for the windows?
She.
Oh, you haven't got, okay.
If you get a chance, you can go out and look.
I wanted to write something down before I forgot this because I guess there's a lot to talk about.
Okay, so let's do under maintenance, the more easy things. So, we did meet this week at Robert Land Middle School.
It's okay.
We'll number.
Is it not the facility update?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we went at. Robert Land Middle School to do a pre bid walk through for the H V A C project. We have bid openings next week for that project, so when we come back and meet again, we'll have a name of. A company coming forward with that project. Also talked with Williamson Triver about. Demand traps or the secure entrances as they're actually called. Project, the S V A project at Peterson and at Roanoke Elementary School. Showed some drawings, um. We both made some changes to the drawings, we didn't really like the way some of the things were laid out. Um, some on their end, some I just didn't want, I thought maybe we could make it a little better. Um, he's gonna come back in. The next time we meet, which will be next week. With the updated drawings and get that project moving forward as well. Something that. Greg and I talked about was also, as Dr. Lewis said, the window project um at Roanoke Elementary School. That is something we want to look at. We'd like to go do the same, the two projects at the same time. But we're uncertainly if the S V A will allow it to be S V A project and an S V A at the same time or not. He was gonna check to see if that would be allowable to them. That way the school's under construction just once and not going on. The other thing is we did talk about uh the skylight and the options for. Either repairing the skylight, replacing the skylight, or removing the skylight. We were gonna, he was gonna try to put a.
M I P.
Yeah, thank you. You know what it was called? A major improvement project together um to submit before the school board authority. Hopefully that they will maybe even fund that, it would be in a small chunk of change, which is asking for a large. When we've asked before, it's always been a total roof replacement. And they've always said no, that the roof are bad and they didn't qualify for a total roof replacement. So if we ask for just a small piece to either repair, replace, or remove the skylight. Hopes are that they'll have a little bit of money left over at the end and say sure, we'll give this to you, so. Keep you updated as that goes on. So at Peterson.
If there's a. If they choose to remove this, if it's. It's decided to remove the skylight. Solar panels where that is?
I don't know. We didn't get that far.
For some e- energy?
Can't tell you, we tried a solar light at Leading Creek School, it was built miserably.
Okay.
And you think of where Roanoke is, it's a more.
It's a shade, a tree.
But we are timbering, so that's changed about there. Anyway, we didn't get that far. We just did talk about the project. So Peterson, was it the day after Christmas? Right after Christmas, had a water line burst.
Yeah.
Uh, in the preschool room.
Monday the twenty sixth.
It's been a lot of fun fixing that, but I will tell you, we are on schedule to bring preschool back tomorrow. They've been out since, of course, they have Christmas break. But they were back. Repairs made to the roof, to the ceiling. To the insulation because it was totally soaked. Ceiling came out, most of it.
Were the lines on an outside wall?
No.
They were on a new.
They were inside the wall, I mean, close to the, but. But on the edge.
We had a picture.
Yeah, it just burst through in the middle of the pipe. Not really sure. That was about, but it did. Had a lot of water, but it's cleaned up, floors were cleaned up, classroom put back together. Um, Ms. Walter was here this afternoon and. Said all systems were good for tomorrow.
The pipe did go to, to answer your question, to.
Outside spigot.
Yes.
But it didn't break on that end.
Yeah, it was more.
No, it's one of those.
Yeah, and it was.
The weakest link.
Weakest point, and that's what it is.
And it's a small hole to make so much water.
We didn't even know what went back in there, the ceiling's been repaired and painted with new lights where they needed to be, and we've salvaged four of the lights. That were able to salvage, but the others had to be put away replaced. So that's the good stuff. All right, so let's move on to your notebook. And I believe Dr. Lewis provided you with.
Mm-hmm.
A highlighter. And I've tried to do this in order with the notebook, so hopefully I can get things out of order. Let's start with um the, I think it's the section one of Louis County Board of Education office. And you just want me to read off the numbers? How do you want me to do this, because we have four pages to go.
Well, read the number and that has been fixed, repaired, or whatever.
Number two, the wire was removed and there was no light there before to be missing.
Hold on.
Should be the first pad.
Okay.
There you go, now to the next page. There we go.
You think of that.
Number three, boilers, the boilers have had an initial inspection. The inspector told me that he was at the pre bid meeting last week and he told me he was coming back to finish his inspection. Number five, this cannot be done, the tank was replaced, but it is part of the heating system and it must stay at its lowest point. And I asked what it was about and it's a steam separator. But what the heat, that's what I was told. Fourteen, all the ceilings, all the stained ceiling tiles have been replaced. Fifteen, the hot water tank is still in use, so therefore we can't remove it. Sixteen, the wire that they said needed removed is actually a telephone wire placed there by the telephone company. And it is outside the window hanging down freely, but that's where the telephone company put it. Thirty, the A C has been replaced. And that's the last for that section. So number two, uh Jane Lou. It's number two, should be number section two, unless I, and that's the one that should have happened.
Some books aren't in the same order.
Oh.
I don't think. We'll find out.
Okay, so is section two Jane Lou?
Yes.
We're good.
Okay, number two, ceiling tiles have been replaced.
What number is that?
Two. Four, the sewer smell has been snaked by numerous companies. Can't find the location of it, but they do. Put stuff down the drain like those have a smell. Five, the emergency lights, it was the batteries just needed to be replaced, they've been replaced and are working.
Now back to this sewage. Smell, is that in the art room? Has.
One was in there, I don't have my book looking yet, I have to read it, it says it in, because one was in the art room and one is.
Okay.
It's in the book. Uh, number nine, the thermostat in the library was simply needed new batteries, the custodians replaced the batteries and it is now working. Ten, as you well know, the old building has been demoed and a new storage building has been ordered. Eleven, pest control is an ongoing process, we have um inspections every month. Thirteen is kind of redundant because the power's been removed from the old building because the old building is gone. Fourteen, two water fountains have been replaced with water filling stations. Eighteen, the tree stump has been removed. Twenty is the art room. Twenty is the art room sink has been snaked, a new P S D has also been involved in trying to help us locate the issue. Still cannot exactly find it, but when the smell comes, they just put stuff down the drain.
But there I talked to Ms. Roger, our plumber. They blocked it and they don't want her to use it, and now the smell is gone. And she has two other sinks, because it's the old home macro. And they also put a.
Vent. Vent spring, exhaust vent. Uh, twenty one, preschool playground water fountain has been replaced. Excuse me, twenty two, ceiling tiles, stained ceiling tiles have been replaced. Twenty four, roof drains have been cleared, it is on a monthly schedule for the school custodian.
And they get a paycheck there to look.
Twenty seven is the leaking toilet has been repaired. Okay, the next thing on my book was Leading Creek Elementary School.
Twenty eight, uh, did, it hasn't been the playground.
I don't know what twenty eight says, I just have the one.
Twenty nine. I guess that'll happen when it's warmer.
Twenty eight has been scheduled to do, but they're waiting for spring to come.
And then.
I'm only giving you the ones that are done.
One, Rob Smith was at Jane Lou.
But I've never gotten any bill or anything from him. He told me the roof was okay, because when he got on it, there was a bubble. But he said it was fine, but I haven't gotten anything from him, so I haven't checked it off because I don't have a report back from him.
I did talk to him and he, but that's good.
This is only stuff I know that has been.
Yeah.
Like I said, my next one is the Leading Creek.
Yeah.
Three, front door brush up and cut. Four, the weeds were killed. Five, the H V A C is updated and maintained, it's maintained, it's maintained monthly. And with something that our um H V A C guy cannot do, Mason and Barry is called in to fix it. Their company will take care of that for us. Eleven, the playground has been mulched, or mulch has been added to the playground, um, been talking with Mrs. Green, we're gonna add some more mulch when spring comes. Thirteen, roof drains have been cleared and on a monthly schedule for the school custodian. And twenty two, the bleachers have been moved. Next is Louis County High School.
No, I got it wrong. Then Peterson. Then the high, then the high school, okay.
Two, the fire panel has been repaired. Eighteen, the fire curtains have been repaired.
I have number six checked off.
Okay.
From a previous time.
Maybe.
Yeah, that's the HVAC duct cleaned and maintenance.
Nineteen, the F stairwell drain line has been repaired. Number twenty four, and this is according to the former voca, voca teacher, the school principals, the candy maintenance at the garage doors were working properly. So I'm not sure why that was ever put on there. Waiting on the list back from the school principal, Mr. Weston Said he was gonna work on that with Rodney, but when we come back on the twenty third. I'll be able to update you more for Louis County High School. Next one is Peterson. Sorry Dave.
That's all right. Uh, I'll.
Number three, the HVAC repairs have been made. And it's ongoing, I mean, anytime there's a problem with the system, we call someone to come in and somebody can handle it themselves. Four, the A C has been repaired. Five, a lock has been placed in the septic lib. Six, the kitchen outlet has been moved. Seven, the leak was repaired in one fifteen, no longer leaking water into the lights. Eleven, ceiling, tall ceiling tiles have been replaced. Twelve, the batteries have been replaced in the emergency lights. Thirteen, pre K fence has been secured. Seventeen, a new door and frame have been ordered for the kitchen. Nineteen, pest control is ongoing monthly. Twenty seven, the lights just need new bulbs, there are actually lights in the hallway, they just need to have the, the light bulbs themselves replaced. And thirty, caulking was adding around the sink, I believe that was in the pre K classroom.
Yes.
Next is Roanoke. And this has been over the past several months, the HVAC system has had many repairs at Roanoke School.
Which number is that?
Number one. Three, electrical outlets have been tightened. Five, the ladder has been secured. Seven, the leaks in the gym have been repaired. Nine, leak in room one oh three has been repaired. Ten, a ground fault has been installed in the pre K room. Twelve, that project is underway, we're in the midst of that one. Thirteen, that project is in the planning stages, we'll just discuss that as well. Thirty one, the tiles have been replaced in room one oh two. And thirty two, the ceiling tiles have been replaced in the kindergarten. Next school is Robert Land Middle School. Number two, the HVAC and oil systems had an initial inspection. Number four, the down spot, down spouts, excuse me, have been connected to the drain lines. Eleven, the locking mechanism has been replaced on the art room door. Thirteen.
Only one before eleven.
Four.
Four.
Thirteen, the HVAC replacement, or it's in the planning stages with the HVAC replacement project. So that thirteen will be taken care of with the. Heating and air project. Fifteen, ceiling tiles in room three oh nine and the entire fifth grade wing have been replaced. Sixteen, the gravel parking lot is now finished, doesn't like a fish pond in there. Number twenty four, the water fountain near room one twenty one has been repaired. Number twenty five, the lights in the cafeteria, cafeteria, cafeteria manager's office have been replaced. Twenty six, blinds in room two thirteen and two nineteen have been replaced. And thirty one, the shuffle door ports were repainted, I believe, over Thanksgiving break. And then the rest is custodial. And then the rest is a special. And the first one is number one, which we're gonna discuss in a few minutes, is the replacement of the boiler. Three, outlets in room one twenty-one, one sixteen, one seventeen, and meeting room have been covered. Number four, heating units have been repaired in one oh one, one thirty, computer and clerk's office. Number six, pest control is an ongoing project, again, like it is in any other location. Ten, ceiling tiles in the meeting room have been replaced, ceiling tiles in the clerk's, or excuse me, sixteen, ceiling tiles in the clerk's office have been replaced. And seventeen, the ceiling tiles in the front hallway have been replaced. Eighteen, the door in the corner of the building has been repaired. Should no longer be sticking. Number twenty, blush control has been added to the main restroom. Twenty-eight, um, again, this was a Rob Smith thing. He and I talked about making repairs to the kitchen floor, so that's in the planning stages. Twenty-nine, the parking lot has been extended. Forty-two, the power cord has been removed and hanging out of the window. Forty-three, lights have been repaired in one sixteen, one seventeen, Mr. Paul and Ms. Owen's offices. And fifty-one, the wooden steps have been removed. Is it, can I? Maybe a high school or state with the next.
Couple, couple things. Couple things. Do you know, uh, the status, uh, did, I believe they ordered or put in a requisition anyway for, uh, some kind of special dirt clay for the baseball field?
I've seen that.
In October?
I don't recall seeing that at all.
I don't, I never see.
Okay. Well, I've said that someone said they put in a requisition.
They, um, I normally sign off and I don't.
You don't remember?
But I can have Kim, she makes a copy of everything I sign.
Most of the stuff that's sent to me is done email, so I really have tracks of it. It's just putting a handy mail dirt.
So if it's, so if it's a, it's some kind, you know anything about what kind of dirt is, is what clay?
It's infield dirt and it's place sand.
I know what you're talking about, but I, I don't know that it.
Hey, I'm having trouble hearing everybody.
You don't know if anybody?
I'm trying to see if there's been a requisition for infield dirt.
I'll check. It's just an in, no, it's not turd.
It's a.
It's a dirt clay sand mix is what it is. It's for infield.
Check with the AD, maybe at high school. Maybe it got to there and then it stopped.
I wrote it down.
Got misplaced? Okay, and I did have somebody, uh, ask a question. The track area, Robert O'Bland, do they lock those gates tight to where you can't get in?
At nighttime they do, because we had a, a bad problem with, um, finding drug paraphernalia in the morning and we were, for security of the students.
They should be, but during the day is it, is there?
It's not supposed to be.
I know it's not supposed to be, but someone made a comment. They were out with their kid with a stroller and they wanted to walk the track and they, they had no access in.
Shouldn't have been unless there was something going on and the repairs were being made, but no, that's normally left unlocked except for at this time of day.
Oh yeah, you need to knock their locker at night, yeah. But you know, it's a kind of thing, it's that kind of thing where we want the community involved.
Yeah.
Remember back in the day, kids were there all the time, all day long in the summertime.
Nighttime too, and that's.
Well, it shouldn't be available at night. Okay, I think that's all of that.
Next is, consider and approve carrier commercial services for boiler replacement for the transportation department at the Armory in the amount of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Adam is moved. Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
So it was Dave and Adam?
It was Adam and Kenny.
Okay.
Instead of replacing the boiler, have you looked into getting both aired like a, maybe like a air tube or something to where you got both of them because, have you, have you looked at doing both of?
Boiler's not gonna pass its next inspection and before we do air, we probably need to consider replacing those single pane windows right now. That was discussed with more than one person that went up there to look at the project.
Was it, was a?
I, I, I seem to refresh my memory, but did Mr. Drummond say something about that? I've got that in the back of my head or something. And, and Mr. Drummond's report.
He said that the boiler was dangerous, basically.
And that's what needs, that's why we're trying to get it repaired.
Was that, was a, was a split system discussed where you would have a smaller boiler, which would be less money to do the mechanics area of that side of the building? And then a, a different system for the offices area, which would then be like an HVAC system? Because you would not be air conditioning the mechanics bay. So where you would have a, a new boiler? And then a, a different system, which would be HVAC for the rest of the building.
That wasn't discussed that I recall, but what was discussed is trying to use some type of, um, infrared heating system that would hang from the ceiling.
That's a tubing system, yeah.
For that area.
A piping system, yeah.
So from what, from what I understand, we're still using window air conditioners, correct, in the offices?
In the offices, yes.
Okay. So did we have, I mean, did we have all of that quoted? What's, what's the scope of work?
No, the scope of work for this is just, is just to replace the boiler, yes.
The air conditions and the windows have been replaced.
The air conditions and cells have been, but to look at doing it, to air condition that entire wing was recommended that we replace those, all of those single pane windows before we look at trying to put in HVAC for, uh, an AC system. Because if you think about what happens in the summertime with those windows, it's just a heating system. The sun comes through it, it's just gonna fight it until we get the windows replaced.
Then we're, we're putting in money in a new boiler, which we need, or a new heating system, which we need. But then you're losing heat through all those windows. And if the air conditions are left, left in the window all winter, you've got heat.
We have to replace this boiler. It has to be replaced. Because if not, it's not gonna pass inspection.
Something on the next agenda, um, to get approval, to get a quote, to replace the windows.
I don't, I don't need approval to get a quote, Mr. Lowder. I can do that, but I'm not sure I can have that done by the next board meeting.
No, I, I think we're just, uh, I think we're just wasting our money at this point with the new boiler. If we can't, if we can't keep heat in, we can't keep cool air in.
There isn't anybody at the bus garage in the summer, just Mr. Paul and Tanya. We're talking to offices.
Gary, what's your thoughts on this?
Why's she walking away?
She's getting her pay.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't know.
No, no, that's not what I'm after here, but I'm saying, do you have any other ideas of the?
The only thing I was involved in talking to Mr. Drummond was, you know, to discuss the possibility of tubing in the mechanics area. My, my personal concern would be if we're just replacing this, uh, we have the poly tubing system to do that with the zone valve and stuff. Seems to be an ongoing issue and I'm just a little concerned with that if I was being asked, because I know part of it and that.
Terry, can't hear you.
Mr. Lowder can't hear you.
My concern has started. Can you hear me, Kenny?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
My concern was, the only thing I was involved with with the discussion was with Mr. Drummond and Jason, or Jason, uh, but we discussed the possibility of tube heat in there. Part of the problem being the, the piping that goes throughout the building, the zone valves, um, having issues with them working. I know that we can, we can't control the heat with, uh, in the room that Brad's using in front of the garage area as well as the other room. I did discuss that with Roger and them to see if there's some way we could bypass those or something, because it's, it's all hot. It's not regulated by thermostat or anything, so those two rooms are boiling off and the rest of it is, is kept. So, uh, and then we got the wind that's going on the back section that we've got closed off right now. That my understanding, and I don't know for sure, but what I heard was there was problems with the, uh, the piping going through there, circulating the water steam, whatever, through there is having leaks, so those areas were shut off, so they got absolutely no heat. My concern is just if we put that money into that to get us through the rest of summer. Kinda, kinda agree with what you were saying, is kinda throwing money out the window, literally. But at the same time, we're looking at a boiler system that is in desperate need of repair. So it's a, it's a, gonna be a tough call for spending that money on the boiler system right now. We may be overspending for what we really need and then finish it later with spending cost more and longer. Tough call, but I, I don't know, I wouldn't, you know, again, I, I don't want to set up this, this easy wheelhouse here.
Now, um, if we do the boiler system, and that'll heat the whole building, right? It does, the new boiler. So for air conditioning, a lot, a lot of people nowadays doing something like the heat pump system, where you have a unit that does heat pumps just for air conditioning?
Well, the heat pumps can be used to aid in that, yes.
To aid in air conditioning? Oh, you still have to have an HVAC then?
I'm pretty sure you still have to have a, a condenser to go along with it.
Well, I mean, can you put a, a, a condenser that, that say you're into the building outside, a unit that would then?
I don't get that involved in HVAC. That.
I don't know.
We got Donny Roush, that, that is a HVAC guy, but he would be able to do that more. I wouldn't wanna say something that's way over my head, but I don't get.
Cause we're just going air conditioning, the area that has the offices.
Yeah, if, if I was gonna do that, I would, I would split the system myself, but, but I would be looking at, I would, or on rooftop. But they are right, that, you know, the, the windows in that are being held by prayer a little bit, culture. And, but I mean, that's another project, but, uh, I mean, it's a tough spot to begin because we got a boiler system that.
Has to be fixed.
Working, has to be fixed, but in the big scope of things, there's a lot more than this.
If, if this inspection gets shut down, miss, what, what is our alternatives as far as, is there some kind of like temporary heating we could put in there that, uh?
Just small units per room.
What I'm saying is if it gets shut down, is there something we can do temporarily till we can get a price on these windows? Instead of spending a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars? You know when the next inspection is, miss, or do they take?
Probably last week. He will be back this week to finish.
Miss Henner, is it your understanding it's dangerous?
It's my understanding that it's dangerous.
But that's a concern of mine.
I just sent Mr. Roush a message to ask him about the condenser.
Uh huh.
I just sent it. It's all in me as a man.
Um, I'd, you know, if it's, if it's dangerous when it gets shut down, then it's definitely gonna be a concern for the whole building. But then also, if this is approved once upon a while, forgetting to, 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 to bring it up in the, in the, but I don't know.
I think it's something called a mini split or something, or some kind of air conditioning way you can do a mini split somehow to do air conditioning.
I know they do that on homes, but I've not done the HVAC in commercial buildings myself.
I would, yeah, I, I'd kinda like to see, um, some kind of quote for a, maybe a smaller, new boiler unit for that wing of the building. And then an HVAC system for the other wing of the building and have what we would call a split system. Where part of the building's on one system and the other part of the building's on another system. If we could get a quote for that. Quick, quick, pretty quick.
Yeah, I don't, I, I agree with you, Dave. I think, I think, you know, uh, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for that boiler system, that's a lot of money, boys.
Well, I, I don't think it's a lot of money for that, that, but it's the fact that we're still not getting air conditioning.
Right.
For that whole wing and and you have two separate units.
We've got, we've got to be cognizant with, with personnel and, and whatever type of harm could happen to, to them. If we're, if we're gonna do this, I think we gotta expedite a quote.
Yeah.
It can't.
I agree.
Can't just wait. Melissa, what's, how difficult is it to acquire a quote from them?
For a split system, HVAC.
I would email him in the morning. And then if somebody wants to respond to me the first time, or hopefully now that he's responding to us and we're working with him, that it won't take quite that long. I wrote down your comment about a separate system, split system.
Yeah, HVAC, HVAC system on one end and a the boiler system.
Donny thinks it would be possible to have a condenser on the office end of the bus garage.
Oh, okay.
But he was calling, Donny did.
Oh, okay. So what he, so I'm understanding that to be the, a new boiler system and then do a condenser.
Well, that's what you asked Mr. Paul, that it would be possible to put a condenser in. And so I texted Donny quickly and he did respond that most likely we'll be able to put a condenser in the office end of the bus garage.
Okay, and that would provide air conditioning?
Yes, yeah, cause I thought.
Central air. And it would, and then the boiler system would providing heat for the whole building? And that condenser on that one end would then be providing air conditioning for that end of the building? Yeah, the opposite end, yeah. Which sounds like a pretty good way to go. Cause that way we could work on a new boiler, get the new boiler started and then possibly maintenance could do the condenser.
And we probably want windows.
Well, we're definitely gonna have to have windows, but.
It may be closed.
Not, yeah, that would be another project.
And maybe not so many windows.
That was talked about as well, reducing the number of windows.
Like across from us, the old board office.
Yeah.
It had a bunch of windows.
I know, I'm not allowed to speak, but she said dangerous. If boiler's dangerous, I know I can't, but you guys leave it in your heads.
It is in our head.
If it's dangerous, then somebody's gonna die or it's gonna ruin the building or. I wrote that down. I would email Mr. Paul in the morning to get a response and I would email the five children.
We have a, a motion and a.
Is there a motion and a second on the floor?
We have a motion and a second on the floor. At this time, is there any further discussion?
Well, uh, just the fact that, uh, if, if our HVAC person says that we can do a condenser unit on the other end, possibly on the roof and, and air conditioning that right, when you face the building, the right side of the building, that half the building where the officers are, and I, I, I trust his word that it can be done, then that impacts how I will vote, so.
And I still think we may need to look at the, as you called them, the tube heating. I refer to those infrared heating systems.
It's infrared.
For the mechanic bay, I don't know what you call that area. That may be also something, discuss additional supplemental.
Any further discussion?
Chris, tell us, will you, uh, reread the, the motion, please?
Okay, the motion is, consider and approve carrier commercial services for boiler replacement the transportation department at the Armory in the amount of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a roll call votes, please?
All right, we've had a request for a roll call vote. Kenny?
Nay.
Nay? Is it? Okay, I just wanted to be sure. Adam?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mike?
Yes.
Motion carries four of one. Item fourteen, consider an improvement auction sale in the spring of twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mike is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam. I think we have, um, something in our folder discussing that.
It is number two. And, uh, we have, um, and I could call Mr. Paul up here and he could talk.
Okay.
We have some buses, um, we have four buses to sell and then we could. We have some buses, um, we have four buses to sell, and then we could look around and see if anybody else had things we, um, to sell, you know, we would ask the schools, is, am I correct, four buses?
We do have four buses.
And then you put down, he's interested in acquiring a foot lift would be considered a new purchase. We have four buses to sell this year to offset the costs, largely reimbursed a couple of years. And then we would look at some things at the maintenance.
To to the requests that I've worked, I'd like to look, of course, to possibly consider getting a a used foot lift that the the whole county could use. There's many times that they could be using, if we had much more, we could trailer, maintenance could trailer around it. They could be beneficial. Um, also, possibly looking into a new lift for the trans- for the garage part, the wheel lifts. Um, we have an issue with the lift that we have. Gets inspected every year, but it has an issue, and we haven't been able to get the new cables replaced, which have been replaced, ever been replaced. And so, um, looking at the possibility of maybe using some of this funding toward that. So there's a possibility for you all to look at. We we have four buses, and one thing that I wanted to bring up, and I haven't got to discuss this in kind of last minutes, just to even bring up you. I would have had a request, two different requests, through firefighters, and possibly either donating one of the buses, if we have one that's really not repairable, that might not bring much, um, maybe a possibility of donating like we did years ago for them to use for their practice and training. Or the other request that I had was for the, that I'm a little bit more interested in, uh, is for the, um, our academy down there. They they requested seeing if there was a bus that might be too poor for them to purchase or for us to donate for them to have as their shuttle bus, when they have all their training back and forth to them. So I think it's, I think either of those or both of those are valid points, but at the same time, I'm trying to look what's best for us in money to purchase what we need ourselves. So those are options. I do know that, uh, for the the options that we've had have been successful with us, and, uh, and I know that the maintenance has some stuff down there. I was talking to, and I don't want to, I would detect a missing on this either, but, uh, they bring in the, uh, salt truck that they use. We need to get rid of that soon. And here they need, in my opinion, based on repairs needed, will be needed for that, um, either trade that in or using that, adding that, whatever else they have in their buildings that they can get rid of, to maybe put that toward a new truck as well. And then, you know, opening this up more to all the schools that they want to bring the stuff in. While I've got that building, we're really not using, I'm back, and they did bring us the store, or the classroom that I want to get done. We haven't got to do anything on that, we still got room to bring stuff in there, we need a central location. And I just don't want to give involvement, I mean, at the last minute, like we did with Jay Lou, and have and I have our custodians and stuff spend all their time moving it. If we can keep it at those locations and separate it, we can have one sale, they can still.
Pick it up in those locations.
Two separate locations.
Yeah, we just want last and permission to start pursuing it.
Yeah.
And then it would come back to avoid the list.
Mm hmm.
And any action that he would talk to the Fire Department about, or Jacksonville.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of considering and approving an auction sale in the spring of twenty twenty three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries five zero. Any discussion, Dr. Lewis?
None.
The shuttle run activity bus report is on page thirty three in our packet. And it looks like it, they're being.
Picked up.
Well used, yeah, I think the advertisement may have helped that, so.
I think holding, um, parents.
Accountable.
Responsible that we need it, and making sure it's being used.
All right. Next, we have consider and approve the board paying for the Lewis County High School wrestling team and two coaches to stay overnight at the W S A Z Wrestling Tournament in Huntington, West Virginia on January twenty seventh, twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Kenny has?
Second.
Okay, and Mike is seconded, discussion? I just have a question, if the basketball team were going to a tournament in Huntington, just a regular tournament, not this sectionals or anything like that, would we pay for their night to stay overnight?
Well, they probably had their, we haven't, uh, Mr. Fisher sent that out, and so the boosters, uh, you know, are trying to raise money and pick that up.
All right, we're talking about two different things, basketball and wrestling are totally two different situations here.
She said.
As a wrestler.
She said tournament, which means they would probably, you know, play Friday and a little bit Saturday, but I don't know that our basketball has a tournament. We, I think we hosted something at Christmas and brought them here.
Yeah, but we, they used to go to.
Basketball, please don't ever.
Justice.
Basketball, oh, you know, I have to weigh in.
I I I'm just asking a question, it doesn't have anything to do with weighing in or not weighing in. If if there are activities on a Friday and a Saturday in Huntington, I don't know that we would bring kids back on Friday night and then take them on Saturday, regardless of if it was cross country even, I'm just trying to ascertain who would have paid for those rooms.
Let's go forward, I mean, look at, look what our basketball team's doing this year. And they don't need to be shuffled back, even our basketball, girls, boys' basketball, they don't need to be shuffled back every night, have to be meet on the bus at five thirty A M. Because they play at ten A M, twelve A M, two, and at two P M, it doesn't matter. It's a lot of traveling and.
I I just.
Sports, Lewis County sports has come a long way in the last few years, and I will support anybody. Any team, our track team, tennis team, whatever it is, but that's a lot on those kids, especially as a teenager. And some of them is getting close to eighteen years old, and you know that when they're in the coaches' hands, they're in, they're in good shape. They, they may come home, get off the bus, and not show up the next morning.
Well, here's, here's the thing that concerns me, is when Mr. Fisher was here at the last meeting, he said that the boosters raised that money, when Mr. Heath was here this, the thir- this evening, the band boosters raised that money. And, um, as I understand it, the boosters for the wrestlers, um, bought uniform number seven with the money that they had raised.
The booster money is to feed our kids when we're out of town, whether it be basketball, any other sport I name. The booster money is to feed those kids, take care of those kids, you know, you never know what's going to happen. We may have to go buy bandages, we may have to go buy ace bandages, whatever, but that's what the booster money is for. The school should buy hotel rooms for anybody because it takes too much, I don't want to say too much staff out of our kids to travel that long on a bus. And then go back the next day, meet up at five thirty in the morning, or, you know, some of it may be seven thirty, whatever. But Lewis County sports has really came a long way, and to tell them that, hey, we can't pay for a hotel? I mean, that's, that's part of your education, that gives them the drive, it gives them the discipline to want to do better. Have good grades, make the team, continue on.
I think that for all sports, I mean, if 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 they're going to a turn- a big tournament or something, where they're going to be there late, I think that we ought to provide the hotels, doesn't matter whether it's football, doesn't matter whether it's wrestling, doesn't matter whether it's basketball, all sports. Uh, I think, you know, I think that just, uh, would encourage the students and the the coaches to to see that, uh, you know, they're getting a fair shake too, so.
And Mr. Bush, at one time, you are correct, we did do that.
Yeah, the basketball team played in the.
I think it brought to our attention that, uh, we're letting people in and we're hurting the revenue.
Well, I know.
And so.
But one thing about, one thing about high school sports and middle school sports, they, um, you have to have a two point O to compete. And it gives them that drive. And and I'm telling you this as a coach myself, if you don't have two point O, guess what, you're done. Can't wrestle for me no more, you can't play baseball for, you can't play foot- football for me. It gives them that drive to make those trades, and I just, I I, I mean, I see other schools around us all the time. I'm I'm involved in middle school, high school, not only in Lewis County, but all the counties around us. And they don't ask no questions, honestly, they don't ask no questions, you don't want to go to this store, they can't afford. We're wasting more money going to these tournaments and driving back, driving back, and driving back, and that's the end of my rant, but. It keeps them good grades, it keeps them disciplined.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of considering and approving the board paying for the Lewis County High School wrestling team and two coaches to stay overnight at the W S A Z Wrestling Tournament in Huntington, West Virginia on January twenty seventh to twenty eighth, twenty twenty three signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carries five zero. We just need to be certain that we are fair to all.
Like we have to be consistent.
Yes.
I'd agree a hundred percent, Phyllis, we got to be fair across the board.
All right, next we have a policy, the second reading and adoption of policy chapter forty one twenty, paragraph four, the employment of substitutes. It's on pages thirty through thirty two of our packet. And I believe.
It's in highlighted and in the word, I mean, user consecutive.
Yeah.
Spinsled in, and we need an effective date.
All right.
And we adopt it.
Do I have a motion with an effective date spelled out?
I could ask Mr. Tid when the semester changes, that's coming up, uh, second nine weeks.
That would be a good time.
It's Friday.
It ends Friday?
If that's a date you would.
Remember.
You know.
Effective the start of the new semester.
Okay.
Which would be, which day would be the start of the new semester?
Thirteen.
Okay, I make a motion, we adopt this policy effective January seventeenth.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam, discussion?
Federal, will this superintendent agree?
I, try again, Kenny. Try again. This is the substitute policy for the ten consecutive, um, refusals.
Maybe you could, maybe you could read it for him, maybe he could, because I'm sure he hadn't seen it.
Uh, well, this is the third time we've had it, right, or fourth?
It's, we've been working on this for a long time.
This is the total of ten consecutive instances of unavailability or refusal within a school year utilizing a substitute call out system. Remember, we talked about Smart Find, um, where it records the numbers that were called, um, after the sixth occurrence. Um, that the, uh, a warning letter will be sent after the sixth occurrence, and after ten total instances of non- availability.
Overnight.
Availability.
Is that correct?
It, well, we have, let me get there, all correspondence of this nature shall be sent via an overnight USPS letter. Warning letter is issued in the following four additional instances of nonavailability and refusal consecutively within a school year. Um, the superintendent should recommend the termination of employment, that's what we're talking about, and we're saying we'd have an effective date of January seventeenth of twenty twenty three.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion?
Well, I do have a question.
Okay.
So the system we have. It's call after call after call after call, I've witnessed it, does that mean every time they call, they refuse it once?
It's per day you're out to work.
It would be per instance, per per the day.
By.
So it don't matter if they call twenty five times?
On the same day.
It's it's only one thing, correct?
If one gets accepted, you'd say somebody accepts a job, and then they get another call for another thing.
It would be two different times, because we have, you mean, we have a.
But they're not going to be penalized because they've already took another job, right?
If they take another job, they would not be, like, if we have a custodian that's also a aide, if they go as the aide first, they don't get penalized because they're a custodian.
The the question I'm asking is, if you get fifteen calls every morning from the, that makes the system. Does that count as one day?
Well, we don't, it it calls you after six, and then it's reset, I do not, it's, would count as a one refusal.
It's one refusal. Because it's all on the same day.
So if they call me fifteen times, say I'm a substitute bus driver.
For the next day.
Fifteen times, that's only one against me.
That is correct.
If it's fifteen times on the same day.
And the bus doesn't use the call out system.
So what is it, Phyllis?
It's it's the same day, if if it's.
That's one refusal.
Well, that's one refusal.
Thank you.
That's one refusal, okay, that's all I want.
Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, nay, motion carries five zero, Dr. Lewis, the superintendent's updates?
Yeah, on, uh, your folder is, uh, sheet three is a, uh, ethic, uh, disclosure that you have to file. I just wanted to remind you, you can't do it before January first, and you have to do it before February first. If you have any questions, let me know.
Done.
You do that as a, um, you're done, Mr. Bush?
We're done, we're done.
Mr. Gessi? Well. Thank you.
In my pile, it's not.
Thank you.
In the mail?
And then I would like to call, uh, Mr. Tid up, and he's going to give a couple of updates of, um, some communication. I don't want to take your thunder, but you're in a superintendent update, uh, network installation and renewal.
Yep, I have three little things for you guys.
Thank you.
Three updates, I suppose, say it that way, sir. Uh, first thing is, uh, what I handed you here, this is a, um, a quick thing that we've been working on. This is the new background to the student Chromebooks. Uh, we've been using the student Chromebooks for a little while now as a place to send announcements out to students, to parents. When they turn on their Chromebooks, they see the same thing every day on their background. Um, it's just a good place for us to keep the kids informed as to what's going on. Um, and recently, this one was not created by a student, but recently we've started having students create these backgrounds. They get involved and they can have their own little, we provide the message, we provide the, I guess, what we'll call an assignment, and then the students can go in there and be very creative and put up their, you know, their creative ideas to make their own background, they put the little name on it that says, by Dominic whoever, um, and it's a, it's a nice little thing for, that goes across the entire county, and they can say that they've been informed, so.
Because we always hear communication.
Yeah.
And so if you're on the listserv for Lewis County, you receive. And so if you're on the listserv for Lewis County, you receive this.
Mm-hmm.
Because we want our employees to know, and then all the students will know.
Yep.
Here are some dates. We're trying to update them the calendar. And here are the dates. It states the date, you know, end of quarter. You can see that's how Mr. Tid could name that so quickly.
Yep. Um, another thing that this, so we're working with a couple teachers at the high school. Mrs. Turner, uh, Mrs. Lowe are working with us at the high school. Uh, Mr. Akers at the middle school wants to get involved as well. So we put the assignment out there, say, "This is the information you need on the background." And then the students go to it and they submit them, and we kinda make a little decision as to which ones are gonna go up, which ones are most appropriate, and all that. But man, they're proud when they see their name on the background. So, it's real nice. Um, that was the first thing. Second thing is, we have network installations happening. Uh, I talked to you last March about our category two ERIC funding, which supports our network infrastructure. And with that network, network infrastructure, it's taken about a year, well, almost a year to get all this paperwork going through. Uh, but our networks are being upgraded as we speak, actually. Um, Roanoke was last Thursday. Uh, Leading Creek is being done right now. Uh, we have a guy out there replacing the access points in the ceiling and the switches in the closets. Um, we're just upgrading. This new network is gonna allow us to be, it'll be better for the students, uh, our, our bandwidth will increase. Um, we have a lot more students online since the last time we upgraded our network. Uh, we upgraded our network in these locations in twenty fifteen. And we would, when we, that, when we did that project, there was not a one-to-one initiative. Uh, now that there is, it was requiring a lot more. And we've been working on this for, to be honest, I've been working on this for, for years, this need to be, needed to be done. Uh, but I'm glad I waited till after COVID because now we see the, kind of the full picture of, uh, one-to-one devices, what devices we have. And, uh, this new network's gonna be great. That brings my next point, um, of the one-to-one program and continuing it. Like I said, once you open that one-to-one program up, I don't know if there's any clothes in it. Um, it's just a, it's a one-to-one device, it's a tool that the students use in their classroom every single day. Um, and we have to think about renewal. So I'm in the process of demoing a couple of devices, just trying to see how they are gonna function. Um, I'm gonna bring that kind of purchase here to you in probably within the next month or so. I'd like to bring that purchase, um, quote to you, and you can look at it and, and approve or just do what you have to do. Okay?
Calendar, if you look, the twenty-fifth is a NTI day.
Mm-hmm.
February seventeenth is a PLC. Just, you know, you can look at these dates.
Yep.
Okay?
Uh, we publish this on Facebook, on phone call, on text messages, literally everywhere we can publish it, we've published it. So people should be aware. And now we're saying it here, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I also want to see, uh, the void's feeling about moving fifth grade from Robert L. Bland back to the elementary before we, uh, spend some, uh, time, you know, doing some research. I just need, you know, to know the feeling of that.
I, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so I have three, so I will go forward and.
Oh, research, absolutely, some research.
You will have people presenting, and then, you know, we would have to have public meetings and so on. Okay.
Kenny trying to say something. Reese?
Am I able to comment?
Yeah.
I have a list, stronger, you know, fifth grade to be in elementary.
Okay.
And of course, part of that will be space. Do we have space?
That's lots of homework.
Lots of homework, yes.
Do some homework and some research, but before we, and I also, you know, we had a meeting scheduled, I think, about the four-day week. The state superintendent, Dr. Stan goes, which I said, no. Barry Plain, no. I'm a little disappointed. They did say we could do year-round school. I don't think anyone was interested in it. And so I didn't wanna waste people time coming in to say, "The answer is no." I did send that out on the listserv to all the employees. I know some people were disappointed, um, but if the answer is no, and. And the other, I think, uh, the conquer the field is wanting to meet us at the next meeting. And the good news is, I wanna say Elizabeth House. Do you know if that's her name? Uh, Mr., from West Virginia, Chamber with the jobs.
Yes, it is.
Okay. She's gonna be at our Jane Lou meeting to, uh, present to the board about that program.
About the jobs, she means.
Yes, with graduation rate.
Yeah, you're talking separate things. Conquer the field is different.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Without a pause.
It's, it's almost eight o'clock, and, uh, Jerry Paul emailed me last night about the roads. So I was up checking roads and he was checking roads. It's been a long day.
Anything else? All right. Board comments? Mike, oh, you have something else, Dr. Lewis?
Oh, I did check the H and M Motors due, um, behind to park the building.
Okay.
Okay, uh, yes, I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. First thing, uh, Jim Gaston was a former board member, and he passed away. And Jim was a good board member. I know Jim all my life. Uh, so my condolences go out to his family. And, uh, Jim was a board member for several years and a good one, so. Uh, the next one, uh, supervision up in the cafeteria up there at the high school. Has that been looked into a little better? I know there's somebody there to take, I'm not talking about somebody there to check off the lunch thing. I'm talking about, do we have a person that is on duty at the high school?
Yes, we do, sir.
Okay.
And I've personally been going, I've been up there, and there's a blue line. And the kids tell me, "Dr. Lewis, you're supposed to be on the blue line." Cause I guess that's where, and there are people walking about, but they have this blue line.
Man, also, uh, I, I don't know if it's got mentioned at the last board meeting, Gary White retired. Wanna wish him a, a, a good retirement. And, uh, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Adam?
Uh, the only thing I was gonna bring up was Josh West Virginia grads, and you all already had of it, so I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Kenny? Do you have any comments?
Come back to me, Phyllis.
Okay. Do you have any, I'll come back to you? Okay?
Yeah, please come back to me.
Okay. Dave?
Uh, also wanna send out condolences to, uh, the fam, Katrina Smith, the librarian at Louisville Bennett Library, and, uh, her family, uh, with, uh, the, the loss of her companion. And, uh, of course Katrina is the librarian at Peterson School, which we, we allow, the library allows her to go out and be the librarian there. She's part of the, part of the, the school system family. So condolences to her and her family.
Okay. Kenny?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I just wanna add, uh, high school, middle school sports, whatever sport it is, that they have a two-day event. Everybody in the county knows that I'm a wrestling fan. We travel every weekend. We practice seven days a week. But every team should be treated the same. And if they go to a two-day event, they should be offered the same thing as what we just voted on tonight. And the thing, my thing about it is, is it comes down to grades. If they have enough grades to play on that team, or wrestle on that team, or play basketball on that team, you know, they all need to get a fair shake. So. And I just, I wanna appreciate all the teachers, principals, A.D.s, everybody that makes this stuff happen. A lot of people don't know what goes on behind the scenes. I do. I do it pretty much every weekend with a heck of a lot more kids. And it's tiring, it's, you get more help, but at least we know they're doing the right thing. And we should offer them the right thing. And congratulations to everybody. And let's keep moving forward. Let's make Lewis County sports great. And everybody knows I'm a sports fan, but I'm also an academics fan. You have to have the grades to play. And that's all I got.
Okay. We don't wanna also forget the spelling bee people and the math field day people and the, the art people and.
Drama.
Every.
Theater.
Yeah, drama, theater, everybody that, um, is offering opportunities for our kids to expand their education.
Yes, but that's the stuff we don't see. That is the stuff we do not see. And you know what? They may, they may not play a sport in their life, but if they go win a spelling bee, they go win math field day, they're more, they're more important to anybody else.
Math field day. Math field day is Wednesday, January eleventh at six at Stonewall Resort, uh, the, for the winners. And we announce you to come and see our kids that can do math quickly and well.
Six o'clock, I believe.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um.
And that's, that's the most important part, but when we don't see it, we don't know about it, you know? They're more important to anybody else.
Okay. Our next meeting is January the twenty-third at Leading Creek. We'll start at five o'clock with the local school improvement committee, and the regular meeting will start at six.
It's Leading Creek?
Yes.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I make the motion.
Adam has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Dave is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?